To afford the challenge and denial are large corporations. In this bill, the government has virtuously provided itself exclusive rights to extensions when the state and federal agencies are involved. Corporate and government-funded applications would likely be treated as priority and approved. Yes, priority to some of the same people who offered to pay more to be at the top of the stack. Can this commission guess where the average small business and homeowner fits in the process? At the bottom of the pile, hoping that they don't have to reapply and repay fees. This commission should consider providing small business and taxpayers who can't compete with corporate cookie stamp with a streamlined boilerplate and online examples of a perfect application with clearly outlined procedures. A builder who forgot to cross a T should not be penalized by another spin on the county permits carousel. And this is about public comment time, oddly. The city of Vienna has not only a convocation at the beginning of their public meetings, but they also provide their constituents five-minute public comment periods. Thank you.
Next we have David Tab.
David Tab, Jefferson County, lifelong taxpayer resident. It appears we are in trying times where a few elected officials are controlling the taxpayers. We have two elected official, elected county commissioners that are temporarily being removed from their elected office. This is not over. There is an appeal process for the next 30 days. You, Mr. Stollper, cannot replace them yet. It's truly sad that a few bad people can control, have control over the majority of good, hard-working people of Jefferson County. We're not the only ones. Unfortunately, this is only the beginning. This is occurring across our nation and around the world. I believe that good will prevail over evil. It just takes a little longer when bad, when the bad elected officials have their hands on the money. This brings to mind a phrase within a song. Only the good die young. The only hope is that the bad will perish at some point. I've had over 40 phone calls yesterday with a general question. What can we do? It's simple. Vote. I'm on the ballot, and I can't say what political party I'm registered with. Judge Hammer putting a gag order on me, copy attached, so I can't campaign. The phrase "I'll be back" comes to mind. Well, I'll never leave, and I don't intend to quit or leave. Ms. Kraus and Ms. Jackson received your votes. They put them in office. Now they need your help to keep them there. All the governor, the legislators, federal agencies, which I've already done, to put a stop to this out-of-control takeover by a few elected officials. It is truly hard to be safe with this current county commissioner, that in a few months there'll only be one of you left from the original bad boys. Bad boys, what are you going to do? Y'all have a nice day.
Next we have Jennifer Kraus.
It's nice to see all of you here today and on time. In my time here as an elected county commissioner, I have seen enough to know, and I would appreciate your attention, Mr. Stollper. I have seen enough to know that there is an awful lot of corruption in county and state politics. I am very saddened to know that some people who once told me they were my friend, they were lying to me. But many people were telling the truth. There are many silver linings to the cloudy situation I find myself in right now. I have made many new true friends. Children in Jefferson County are now protected from perverts and predators who seek to expose them to obscene events. These county commission meetings are now covered in prayer for every single meeting until the end of this year, as they were for almost the entirety of last year. I fought hard for transparency in this very dark county government. Two county commissioners sitting here right now voted against bringing prayer to our meetings, and they voted against protecting Jefferson County's children. How can they justify these actions in their minds? And all three sitting here today voted against giving all county commissioners their voice on this commission, and they voted against giving the people of this county their voice. They do not listen to the people of this county, and they only seek to serve themselves, in my opinion. In my time here, I have fought hard for our county residents. I cared not what party affiliation they are. I did my best for everyone. The very sad thing is that I had to fight against people that I shouldn't have, people in my own former Republican Party. I am ashamed of most of those in leadership here in this county, county and state officials alike. At a time when I was fighting for not just Jefferson County, but for the whole of West Virginia, I was abandoned by those in leadership because they were scared. They were scared because they care more about getting reelected than about fighting for the will of we, the people. What they don't seem to get is that the people would be on their side if they chose to go against the establishment, who are selling West Virginia out right from under the noses to Biden's Green New Deal. And, Mr. Harvey, I know that you have been out there defaming me. I'm not done.
Your time's up, ma'am.
Defaming me to certain good members of the public, calling me a criminal. I am no criminal. I, no, I am allowed to finish my sentence.
Your three minutes is up, ma'am.
No, don't take my, I would be finished my sentence right now if you had stopped interrupting. I am allowed to finish my sentence.
According to your policy, she is allowed to finish her sentence. I am not a criminal.
Yeah, take it off.
I do not touch you. I live for God. I always try to do what is right in his eyes, but hey, you might have to blow into a machine to start one car.
You're done, ma'am. Your time is up. Your time is up, ma'am.
I'm done. I've had to get loud to speak over the interruption. I'm getting my things. Move back. Move back. Well, I am leaving. I don't feel like sitting around for this show. Well, actually, yes, I do, I do want to sit down for this show.
Our next speaker is public comment, Tricia Jackson.
I am a Harpers Ferry resident. The people of Jefferson County are witnessing an injustice. The entire system is being exposed, and we see how there is no checks and balances. A court decision has removed two duly-elected servants of the people from office. An election has been overturned, and the will of the people has been subverted. I am working with my attorney and plan to file an immediate appeal. I have no intention of surrendering and plan to challenge this unjust decision every step of the way. Elections mean something, and I will continue to fight for the citizens of Jefferson County against those who are working to do us wrong. The lawfare attacks on President Trump that we are witnessing on a national level are now happening in West Virginia. Just like with President Trump, my opponents have weaponized the legal system in an attempt to suppress and deny the will of their voters. As described by many reporting on the Trump legal proceedings, this election, this is election interference. The people of Jefferson County did not ask for this, nor did they want it. Over the past few months, the groundswell of support from voters has been overwhelming. I am truly humbled by the amount of support and the love that has been shown to me. I will not forget it, and I will continue to fight for the good people of Jefferson County and the state of West Virginia, just like with President Trump. The establishment is afraid of me and what I will do when I become the next state auditor. Can anyone imagine what they are so afraid of? As for me, I am more certain and determined in my resolve to continue to fight and expose the corruption that has wronged the people of Jefferson County, and I will do the same for the state of West Virginia. I haven't given up on fighting for you, and I am asking you not to give up fighting for me either. Let's continue to fight together. Thank you for your support thus far, and I'm asking you to continue to fight alongside me, to fight the corruption, to fight the entrenched good old boy establishment by sending me to Charleston to be your next state auditor. Someone needs to keep a watch over these three. They're going to spend like drunken sailors, and they've already given us a preview. So you need somebody down there to make sure they're doing the right thing. And then lastly, I have in this bag are my items that were requested, the P card, county badge, Charlestown City Parking Pass, and I have a Surface Pro where I approved accounts payable for, so I'm going to turn that over to you, and I would be happy if you'd sign off on this that you've received it. And also into public comment, I am submitting a copy of the Constitution of the United
Next we have Brian Parrish.
Good morning, folks. I spoke at the last meeting, but I'll come back so I can continue on. Back in January or February of this year, I was coming home from a basketball game with my grandsons, and I was eastbound on Route 9 when a Jefferson County Sheriff's Deputy Reserve passed me running 90 mile an hour on this road. It was probably around 1:00. I seen the lights of his vehicle coming at a high rate of speed, and so when he got to me, he passed me up like I was standing still. You know, we got a big case coming up here at the end of the month where a kid lost, lost their life a couple of years ago, and it seems like the court system is failing these people also. You know, my granddaughter and grandson was in a wreck one night down here by the Sheet Store and Burger King. So the police come, it was a head and run. My grandkids were stopped. The police come, said there ain't no traffic cameras, there ain't much they can do. So as a family and everything, we took the social media to see what we could do, because my grandson, he identified the car down to a T and showed the police a picture of this car. And so we reached out on social media, people contacted us, and that happened on Saturday night. On Monday morning, we found a car at Boston High School. So if it weren't for us taking the time to find these people, that police officer, when it left the scene, array determined, they weren't going to do nothing. So who does the people in this county go to when the failure of these police officers, you know, to do their job, you know, just like the lady got run over, how long is this investigation going to take for the lady, the flag, the lady flagging trap? How long? You know, here's a guy, two years, and he killed a young lady out there, close to graduate, you know? You know, who do the residents go to? You know, you see a police car sitting in the middle of a field, and you ride up on a four-wheeler, and he gets out fixing his pants from the backseat and asks if you got a problem, because he's in the backseat with a girl. Could have been a minor. So who do residents go to here to talk about these matters? Because, you know, you can go to town council members, you're supposed to be like the superintendent of this county. So do we come to you to try to get help? You know? I served this country, you know? I gave it everything. That's why I got Walker, and Kane anymore for the rest of my life. But, you know, these people take oath to protect and serve. I mean, that guy that was out there in the field in his crew, that service there, you know, I don't think that's what they was talking about.
Thank you, sir. Next we have Bob H.
Stollper exhibits one and two. I'm putting these in the record because this is my ethics complaint to the ethics commission that was dismissed, and I want people to read it and they can make up their own mind. It's, to follow up on Commissioner Kraus's or Ms. Kraus's comments, it's distressing to me that this county and unfortunately the state are run by a small minority of self-interested, in some cases dishonest, political hacks. And somebody made the comment to me the other day that Stollper has sold Jefferson County to the devil, and my response to him was, yeah, and he's laughing all the way to the bank. At Commissioner Kraus's request, I read this. Truly God is good to Israel, even to such as are of a clean heart. But as for me, my feet were almost gone. My steps had well-nigh slipped, for I was envious at the foolish when I saw the prosperity of the wicked, for there were no bands in their death, but their strength is firm. They are not in trouble as other men, neither are they plagued like other men. Therefore pride compasses them about as a chain. Violence coveth them as a garment. Their eyes stand out with fatness. They have more than, more heart than they could wish. They are corrupt. They speak wickedly concerning oppression. They speak loftily. They set their mouth against the heavens, and their tongue walketh through the earth. Therefore his people return hither, and waters of a full cup were wrung out to them. And they say, how doth God know? Is there knowledge in the Most High? Behold, these are the ungodly, who prosper in the world; they increase in riches. Verily, I have cleansed my heart in vain, and washed my hands in innocency. For all the day long have I been plagued and chastened every morning. If I say, I will speak thus, behold, I should offend against the generation of thy children. When I thought to know this, it was too painful for me, until I went into the sanctuary of God, and then understood I their end. Surely thou didst set them in slippery places; thou castest them down into destruction. How are they brought into desolation as in a moment? They are utterly consumed with terrors, as a dream when one walketh. So, O Lord, when thou wakest, thou shalt despise their image. Thus my heart was grieved, and I was pricked in my veins. So foolish was I, and ignorant. I was as a beast before thee. Nevertheless, I am continually with thee. Thou hast holden me by my right hand. Thou shalt guide me with thy counsel, and afterward receive me to glory.
Mr. H, your time is up.
Whom have I in heaven but thee? And there is none upon earth that I desire beside thee. My flesh and my heart fail.
Your time is up.
This is Psalm 73.
All right. Do we have anybody online?
My heart failed with, my flesh and my heart failed with. God is the strength of my heart and my portion for everything. They are far from thee, shall perish. Thou hast destroyed all them, and so abhorred from me.
Okay, good job. All right, we're going to move on to agenda item number one.
Good morning. I am here to seek the employment of Travis Nupp. His spelling is N-U-P-P, which is, and Travis is a young man who's a Jefferson County resident. He interned at our office in previous summers, and I met him years ago when he was in college. He's a great young man, and he wants to come back to the county. He's currently clerking for Judge Deborah McLaughlin, and so his time's about up on that as a year, and then I would like to start him at $70,000, starting on May 6. And just, just so we're clear, I have two openings in the offices, and this will fill one of those, and I'm still looking for another attorney.
And I just wanted to draw your attention to the back page. Bessie has started to put together fiscal notes so that she can give you a breakdown of the budgeted amount. I think that this is fantastic, so you can see that this is under budget by about $6,000.
All right. And you said the start date's May 6 or May 3?
May 6, which would be next Monday.
The 5th, I think you want the 5th. Right, okay.
Okay.
All right.
Either way, May 5 or 6.
Okay. Well, the start period said May 3. Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Yeah, we did, but we decided to move it back because it was going to be, he's not going to start till next Monday anyway.
Okay.
Well, I'll move that the commission hires, approves the hiring of Travis.
Nupp?
Nupp.
Yes, ma'am.
As an assistant prosecuting attorney at the rate of $70,000 annually, and to begin working on May 5, 2024.
All right, I'll second that. In discussion, all in favor say aye. Most carries.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we're going to move to Nikki Peter, Deputy Burke County Court Office. Do you need us to go into?
Yes.
Yes.
I will move we convene as a fiduciary review board.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most carries.
Okay. The first item that I have before you is you should have in your packet the report from Mr. Lorenzetti, who is a fiduciary commissioner. You referred Mr. Tyrone Stewart's estate to him to hold a hearing and report back with his findings. He has recommended, in this case, that the current successor, Ms. Fredonia Stewart, be removed as successor, and Ms. Donna Herring, who objected to her being appointed as successor, be appointed as successor for this estate. There is one little change from his recommendation. We have since found out that there may be more monies involved with this estate, so we will actually be transferring this over to a full estate and not a small estate.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I'll move to accept the recommendation as presented by Nikki from the, from Mr. Lorenzetti, fiduciary commissioner, to remove Fredonia Stewart as successor and appoint Donna Herring.
Yes. Second.
In discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most carries. I'll move to come out of a fiduciary review board. Second. Any discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most carries. There you go, ma'am.
All right. The second order of business is for the election. We have to set the time and location for canvas. The date is already set by code, so it has to occur on May 20. We typically hold the canvas in the county commission, old county commission meeting room in the courthouse, because we have to have access to all of the election equipment, all of the paperwork and with our system. And it's a security issue if we have to move everything up here. I mean, we can certainly do that, but it would require maintenance to move everything that morning, and then we would have to move everything out that evening. So we typically have it in the commission meeting room. Typically, we start at 9:30, but it is at the commission's discretion as to place and time.
Okay. Not as interested in the start time. I'm curious, May 20, that's several days after the primary.
Correct.
Why don't we start canvassing the next day or the day after that?
So that is actually set in code, and it is set in code, and it allows us time to, we have to review all provisional ballots that are voted on Election Day and determine whether the recommendation is to count, not count, and we also have to prepare all the paperwork that goes into a canvas, which those of you that have worked before understand it is a very time-consuming task. So it is five days after the Election Day.
Thanks.
And also, we have to wait for some mail-in ballots. If they're postmarked as the day of the election, they can be counted, but if they're postmarked after, you don't know until you get it.
Correct.
Yeah. Lot of little moving parts to count.
There are.
All right. I'll move motion to have the 2024 primary canvas stay at the Jefferson County, historic Jefferson County courthouse, beginning at 9:30 a.m. Second. Any discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most carries.
Okay. And then I just wanted to give you all a quick election update as well. Early voting did start yesterday. It was a slow start for a primary, unfortunately. We had 115 voters come in yesterday. The room is working out perfect. I also want to mention that the city of Charlestown graciously allowed us to hold the early voting in Charles Washington Hall, and they do not charge us for that service. So they have never charged us a rental fee, even though we take up 12 to 13 days of their time that they could rent out that facility, they have never charged us. So I want to thank city of Charlestown for allowing us that, and the voters seem to really like that area. Also, our new poll books are in service over there, so they are working out great, so I appreciate that as well.
Thank you. All right. Next, we're going to move to agenda item number three, Luke Peters. See you online.
So to give you some background, we asked Luke to come in because the state of West Virginia received a $1.2 billion appropriation to have universal broadband deployment, and Jefferson County should be the fourth most expensive county to do universal broadband deployment in, and so this will be probably the largest economic development initiative occurring in Jefferson County over the next year. And so Luke, with the state, should be able to tell us how that process will move forward and what it will look like. So thank you, Luke, for coming in. But you're muted.
Thank you. Thanks for the invitation to present today. Good morning, commissioners and to the public. I have several slides here, and I want to go through them kind of quickly. I want to give you a broad overview. It's kind of my assumption that, you know, you want to be interested in what this program will mean for Jefferson County, but in explaining how we're rolling this out statewide and some of the really robust rules and regulations involved with spending $1.2 billion. Hopefully, that will give you some insight and some comfort. As she introduced me, my name's Luke Peters, and I'm currently the program manager for BEAD in West Virginia. I did want to mention the name of our director, Kelly Workman. She's been with the Office of Broadband since it was founded in 2021, and as I just came onboard in December, a lot of what I'm explaining has happened prior to my arrival. I want to give her credit because I think we do have one of the best broadband offices in the country, and that's shown by the fact that we've really stayed ahead of the curve from many states. I'll give you some insight into that. We'd included this disclaimer with some of our other presentations, usually when we were presenting more technical information, but just want to say that if I don't explain anything precisely or leave out any details, that the rules for the program, you know, would be overruling for anything I might misspeak about today. So the funding for BEAD, which is broadband equity and deployment program, or equity access and deployment, is funded through the Infrastructure Investment Jobs Act nationally. It was $42.45 billion. West Virginia is fortunate in a sense because we only currently have 65% to 74% broadband coverage, which is high-speed internet to homes and businesses across the state. That's one reason our award is pretty large, because we are one of the worst-serve states. But we also came in second only to Alaska in dollars per capita, and as you know... And as you know, our terrain makes the installation of almost any utilities more difficult. And we also have a lack of density. So you may be looking, you know, in, in some states where there's more people, there may be 50 houses per mile. We may only have three. And we are, it is our aim and our determination to serve every unserved and underserved business and home, a serviceable location across the state. Universal broadband connectivity is what that means. Also involved in what we're doing is funding from the Digital Equity Act. That's more on the, the kind of softer side rather than the installation. That's education, workforce preparedness, device distribution to low-income and senior populations. We don't want anybody left behind as this, you know, great impact to our economy and our access to world markets has improved. Here's a little look at, like I was saying, what we've been working on over the past couple of years since this funding came out. The program required a five-year action plan. That's been approved by federal NTIA. Then the initial proposal, Volume One, was approved beginning of this year. That proposal included information about the non-deployment programs and how we were going to run those. And then Proposal Two included all the specific details about how this funding will be awarded to internet service providers as they compete through an application process. That was just approved the end of last month, and that gives us confirmation that the state will have that full $1.2 billion. And we will be able to move forward through the application process from here on out. Our digital equity plan was also approved in February, and we were one of the first two states in the country to have our digital equity plan approved. And we were in the top four in the country to have our initial proposal approved. So we are moving quickly. This important dates and applications, this looks backwards a little bit too. I just wanted to let you know, in case you missed some of them, that we have been reaching out to internet service providers, having workshops. We've had onsite trainings, and we'll continue to have them in the northern part of the state, in Morgantown and Charleston, for those that are closer to the southern end of the state, as well as online. So our next event is tomorrow, we're doing online office hours. So any ISPs that want to call in and ask questions and finishing up their pre-applications, which are due at the end of May, they call in then. We've had a Q and A form posted on our website. So as folks are working through that, they can send in questions. And then if it's a response that's relevant, you know, to all applicants, we post those on the website for clarification. And I think, Adwina said she signed up for these forthcoming webinars, so she can be aware of and see that information that's posted. So we are currently in the, skip ahead a little bit here. In the pre-application phase that opened on March 18th, so we were allowed to go ahead and proceed with that before we had the full funding approval, because it's gathering kind of non-project-specific information that will show that applicants are eligible to participate in the program. And they have evidence that they're registered as a business in West Virginia with the Secretary of State. They don't have any bad debts or defaults on federal loans, that they have the capacity to apply, that they have access to funding to apply. Zoom Grants is the website or the platform we use for that. There's training on how to do that in our, on our website. And again, that's kind of what we'll be giving the guidance on to finish out the pre-application phase. So in Jefferson County, I think you likely have better coverage than a lot of states or a lot, a lot of other counties in West Virginia. But, you know, we are not duplicating service. We had to consider any projects that are already funded through state or federal funding, because with ARPO and some other federal funding, we have been chipping away at the unserved areas. And so if those already have a dedicated funding source and a project, we're not going to use BEED money there. So we've pieced together kind of what they call the fabric, which is a map that shows all those unserved and underserved locations. Underserved means it's still copper wire, low-speed dial-up. So that's some internet, but it's not broadband. We released that map, and it's available through our website too. I'll show you a clip of it here in a second. Providers that had any argument against what was on the map, maybe that they served certain houses that are in a forthcoming project that we didn't catch, they were able to challenge that. So we've gone through that challenge process. And that map of those eligible areas is really what drives the applications. So unlike some other cases where projects were confined to a county, a census tract, or another geographical area that might not make the most sense on, you know, how you roll out broadband, where have a preference for fiber. So obviously, you know, it's going usually along roadways and other right-of-ways. It might not make sense that a existing ISP who serves like the eastern half of a county wouldn't be able to cross the line, you know, to the next county. So we're not looking at political boundaries. We're looking at what makes sense geographically, both cost-wise and for access to existing service. So you can see, again, kind of by this color-coded map here, these are the predetermined project regions. And each region is made up of several areas. They don't align exactly with counties. I think Jefferson County probably looks like it touches these two. Each applicant, in order to make sure that people aren't just, or ISPs are not kind of cherry-picking the most easy-to-serve areas, you know, giving a good cost for that, and then giving huge costs for the more difficult terrain. When an ISP applies, they have to apply for the whole region. And they can do that as one large project or a series of projects. And that's part of why it's so important that we're going to assess the capacity of these applicants. And that's what I just want to enforce, is that we and our consultants have really thought through this process to ensure success, not only in the ability of the ISPs to meet our demands, but also to ensure that the service received by West Virginians is top-notch. You know, there's a lot of backstops here to make sure they're not cutting corners. We have to meet, you know, environmental labor and the financial laws. And so there will be a lot of oversight as we move forward. And that's kind of intimidating to some providers. But we do want to make it fair for the small providers to be able to compete against some of the, the big guys, because we think that will give us better customer service and results in a lot of our more rural areas. So as I was saying, for example, if your area is three, or your region has three projects, the applicants all have to apply for all three of those. And they could divide those into two or three projects. Each area could be an individual project. So when that's awarded, we'll look at who applied for that region, what's the best, most attractive and best cost feasible project for each of those areas. And it may all be awarded to one, you know, like this company in the scenario, they applied for the whole region as one project. Or it may be divided by a couple of different companies. We have to work together to serve that region. Again, like I said, we prioritize fiber. We have $1.2 billion. That's a lot of money, but it won't go forever. We may have to consider that cost factors make wireless service more feasible for some areas. It still has to meet speed and latency requirements. And it, while it does tend to be cheaper, you know, if we can serve fiber to an area rather than wireless, that's what we're going to do. So those are the priority projects. We're not always going to be comparing apples to apples, because if like one area only has two applicants, one's fiber, one's not, unless the fiber cost far exceeds our capability to pay for installation there, we're not going to go with wireless. And then there's, you know, other things like DSL. You know, we may have to consider different applications depending on the capacity of different applicants. So again, that's, there's a, there's kind of a money no limit to what we can do. There's an applicant limit to what we think they can handle. You know, we would be cautious about awarding a $20 million project to a startup. We want to show that they have a record of performance, and they have the brand bandwidth to be able to deliver the speeds needed. And then that's kind of the same relative capacity. We're not going to award, you know, the entire eastern panhandle to one company, because, you know, we want to see that they can move these projects along, that they be completed within four years, and that the funding is spread, you know, judiciously around. So, because I think some of these requirements will challenge some applicants. I'm imagining there are providers in your area that you're familiar with that you might, you know, have a preference for. There are just going to be some challenges for some ISPs, and especially the fact that this is a reimbursement program. So they have to have the upfront capital to build their project and then be reimbursed. Not every company can do that. One way that we've, in the past, been able to help and the state legislature has stepped up to make a guaranteed loan pool that gives access to capital for smaller companies. West Virginia-based companies in particular, I think, where they may not be able to go to a bank, they may not be able to show enough cash on hand to do this multimillion-dollar project. But they can prove that they have a line of credit to do that. And each project will have to have a 25% matching funds, which are not, you know, from BEED dollars. Usually, that's going to come from the ISP applicant. This is where it's getting different from like ARPO, where you all may have put some of your own local dollars into projects. I'm not going to say it's impossible to incorporate any remaining ARPO dollars or local money. But I know with ARPO, there's a deadline to spend that by the end of 2026. These projects may go on into 2029. So that's one kind of complication with using local funds. And we have access to other dollars that can kind of help, federal dollars that can help leverage applicant interest in an area. If the bottom line on a project is not real attractive to them, that it would make sense for them to put a full 25% match in, especially in lower-income areas. We'll leverage some ARC funds to maybe reduce the applicant match, you know, down to 12%, 10%, and put grant dollars in that project to make it work for them. Especially in areas where we may not get any applications. We're going to try to reach out to the adjacent applicants and say, you know, you've done this part of Jefferson County. We didn't get any application for this part. We're going to ask you to expand your project to cover that area as well, and then we'll award them additional funds to make that happen. This is what I talked about, they need to have a 10% or greater award amount letter of credit from a credit union, a bank, or a bonding company. That can be a challenge again for some companies. Again, with the oversight we're showing here, they have to have cybersecurity plans in place, ready to be operationalized. So, you know, the more and more we rely on this type of technology, you see it every day in the news, we have cybersecurity concerns from everything from, you know, schools, local governments, local infrastructure being hacked. We want to show that there's a plan to protect these networks and protect the public investment. You know, just generally, see, these are the requirements that'll be required on all these projects from the construction side. One requirement, excuse me, one requirement of BEED is that each of these applicants have to ensure a low-cost, affordable plan. And in West Virginia, we've determined that would be $50 a month based on median household income. That would have to be guaranteed to be offered to those that qualify by income. And if a project and, if a provider improves the level of service in the future, and that's becomes their new base plan, then those people have to be eligible to be moved up onto that better plan for the same price. The in, the price increases to that plan can be pegged to inflation. So it's not going to be $50 forever, but it hopefully will stay as a level kind of percentage of income. And each of the plans I mentioned have had public input. The map has had public input. It's, have all been posted on our website, advertised for input. It's been important us to work, important to us to work with local governments, with other interested parties, residents. And we will continue to have good transparency. Audit requirements will be in place, procurement requirements. Everything will have to be bid, jobs will be made available again through Davis Bacon Labor, Labor Rules to local workers. There's some union preference. We want to see strong labor agreements. There will be minimum federal wage on these jobs. And so going forward, you know, from the construction point until the dollar, or the federal dollars are closed out on these, we will have oversight each step along the way and a lot of reporting. We'll actually have, you know, people out in the field too, to observe that what's been charged to the projects is installed. Speed tests required at every stage. So when they light up that fiber, it's hitting what they promised. You know, that each household is getting that 120 megabyte service that's required for broadband in this project. How do we enforce that? There is the threat of clawback and recruitment of funds. That's, again, part of why they need the credit line. If a project starts, we've already put out some funds for equipment and fiber, and then that company folds, or they said they can't finish, then that line of credit will have, be used to pay back the state, and then we'll find another ISP to finish that project. If they also are, you know, having issues keeping in compliance with any of the things that I've mentioned, that might be another reason that a project might either be put on hold or canceled with that grant, grantee. So we've estimated that the $1.2 billion will not be used entirely, entirely on deployment. There's a non-deployment portion of BEED as well, like I was saying with device distribution, skill development. And I'm thinking like reaching out to senior and student populations, small businesses, ensuring that everybody who has new access to broadband knows how to use it, has devices to get online, can participate in the workforce or education. Workforce development, digital skills and navigator, and affordable device distribution programs. If we have this $50 million that we're anticipating having remaining at the end, and we have to show NTIA that we've covered our goal to serve every, every serviceable location, whatever's left over can move to non-deployment. And hopefully, that was not too much information. Invite you to continue to participate in our webinars. But if you have any questions for me right now, I'd be glad to, to try to give you an answer.
I have a question. I have a couple of comments, but if there are any questions.
Yeah, I don't have any questions.
All right. Few thoughts. First, broadband is fundamental to economic growth. With the rise of video conferencing in the workplace, broadband has the potential to dramatically increase the quality of life of Jefferson County commuters and attract new residents who want to work from home in wild and wonderful West Virginia. I appreciate the presentation and your great work. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. I had some questions, but you covered them, and your presentation was very thorough. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
My pleasure.
Appreciate your presentation and a greater understanding of the scope of the, I want, it's more than a project, so.
Yes, same. We're looking at, with the timeline, working probably into 2029. I know people like to hear the projects come, and they want it right now. There will be, you know, continuing construction projects through the next five-plus years, and that's going to be a big economic impact. We are working too with the State Board of Education to make sure that high school students see a pathway into these jobs, because they, you know, they will be going on for several years. And I think nationwide, we need 200,000 fiber installers in the next couple of years, so.
Wow.
Job-wise, and then, as the commissioner said, you know, people will be able to work online, remote. And I think that's big for West Virginia, because who wouldn't want to live, you know, out on their farm in the beauty of nature and not have to commute into DC every day? So I wanted to also share this upcoming date later this year. In October, we'll have our annual broadband summit, and we invite the public and all interested parties to attend that. There's a agenda and registration will be submitted and distributed later. Thank you again for having me today.
I do have one question. I do have one question and you went through, you know, the whole process, which sounds like it's been really well vetted as far as checking out the companies. Do they have the capacity to do what they say they're going to do and so forth? Do you have, is there any timeline for actual construction or is that still too far in the future to know?
No, I mean, we've hit some minor hiccups. We're trying to be really aggressive in getting this rolled out. And when you're working with the federal government, sometimes you wait another month for review, even when you think it'll be, you know, tomorrow, but we've been pretty accurate so far. We are in the pre-application phase. So till the end of this month, pre-applications can come in. Applications would be due by August. And then we'll have a review period as we assign those projects around the eligible areas. I think contracts or grant contracts would be signed at the beginning of 2025. At the latest. And then that means, you know, construction can start from there. So early next year, we hope this bead money will be translating into actual construction.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Well, thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Luke.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we're going to move on to agenda item number four, Susan McFadden.
Good morning.
Morning.
Morning. I won't take up much of your time, but give me a moment. I don't want to misspeak.
Well, and you have to speak very close to the microphone.
Is that better?
That's.
Okay. I'm here representing the Community Educational Outreach Service Groups in in, I knew I was going to do that. That's the old county, in Jefferson County. And we're here with, I'm here with two of my club members to help support our request. And the request is, can you still hear me?
Yes.
You can move this too.
Oh, yes. So that makes sense, doesn't it? We'd like to request that you, the commissioners designate May 19th through May 25th as Community Educational Outreach Service Week in Jefferson County. And I ask this as a way of designating and thanking the five clubs in Jefferson County for the volunteer hours, and there are thousands of them that they provide for the community and the some of the different organizations and services within the community. We do this, if you don't know what we are, I can explain a little bit about what we do. I don't want to take up a lot of your time, but it recognizes if you do this proclamation and make CEOs week in Jefferson County, it's a way of recognizing all of the work that the clubs do in conjunction. They also work closely with West Virginia University Extension Service. And we've been around for 106 years. They actually had the first group, the first club in 1918. So.
That would make you a relatively new organization for Harper's Ferry.
Perhaps, but wanted to let you know, we're, we've been here a little while anyway. What we are, I don't want to say it incorrectly. Maybe I will have to. We're a nonprofit volunteer organization. Basically is what we do and we help a lot of the different organizations in town. Here it is. We're a voluntary nonprofit organization functioning in cooperation with West Virginia University Extension. And we are one of the largest educational organizations in the nation. So I think that's a good reason to ask for a little recognition. I can tell you one more thing. This is some information that came from our website and it's from 2021. I couldn't get anything sooner. They're probably still putting together data and figures and so forth, but for one year we have 2,466 members in West Virginia in 42 counties. Don't have all the counties, but we have a lot of them. And they provided in one year, they provided 255,500 volunteer hours. So that's kind of a lot. And if you put that into money based on what a volunteer would make at $28.54, that's $7.2 million worth of volunteer services. I rest my case.
Very good.
So we would appreciate it if you would do that.
Yes, and I would like to make the motion. I've been a member of the Lady Fairfax Club, which is part of Jefferson County's organization since 1978. So I move that the commission designate May 19th through May 25th of 2024 as CEOs week in Jefferson County.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. I just happened to have a.
Wonderful. And would you all like to take a picture?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Actually.
And we could change the background.
No, the county organization donated that.
Okay, maybe we'll go over here then.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to move on to agenda item number five. Cochrane Mill LLC. And I believe that's to represent, okay.
Hi, I'm Brooke Perry from Integrity Federal Services here to represent the applicant. So what we're asking for today is a, to advance this to the planning commission. But for the rezoning for the Sunnyside lots six and seven. This is out in the existing Sunnyside Industrial Park. These are some of the last remaining lots in there that have yet to be rezoned. So 75% of the lots in there have already been rezoned from industrial to the residential light industrial commercial district, which is what we're asking for here today. The reason for this is due to the lack of availability of public utilities in the area. It's hard to attract an industrial user without water, sewer, gas. This would align with the adjoining land uses, which are all large lot residential, agricultural and nature. I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have for me.
Only, I don't have a question for you. I have a question for Jenny. Can you lay out a timeline that we need to, and you can sit right here, ma'am, if you don't mind.
So what you, what the petition starts is the 60 day period for you to schedule a public hearing. And then within that 60 days, you refer to the planning commission for a recommendation for conformance with comprehensive plan. We were anticipating this application, so we have it on our May 7th agenda already. So you can schedule it early if you want or later. I think it requires a 30 day notice. I'm not sure about that.
So the earliest we could have a public hearing, correct me if I'm wrong, is June 6?
Yeah.
That's our next day meeting.
Regular meeting.
Yes, ma'am. And I'll move, I'll move a motion that we schedule the public hearing for this application on May, excuse me, June 6. And we have to have a certain time.
Yeah.
At 11 o'clock.
That's during a regular scheduled commission meeting.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
And refer to the planning commission.
And we, and I'll add to my motion to refer this to the planning commission to see if it's in conformance with a comprehensive plan.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Most carries three zero. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next, we're going to move on to agenda item number six, Martin Burke, Church County Historic Landmarks Commission. Oh, thank you. Sorry, I missed the ceremony. I was out of town. I heard it was great.
It was a little windy.
I'm here today to request $13,200 in ARPA funding as part of an 8020 match for Delfield's Depot rehabilitation. This process started in June 2023. The Landmarks Commission submitted a grant application for $66,000 to the West Virginia Department of Transportation, Transportation Alternatives Grant. On April 23rd, 2024, we were informed that we, our grant application was approved. Since the Landmarks Commission acquired the depot in February 2018, the commission has spent over $100,000 to rehabilitate the building. $42,000 of that $100,000 was raised from donations and small grants. Ultimately, the Landmarks Commission would like to open the depot to the public on weekends as a museum, which in turn would boast to tourism. Questions?
Thank you. It's 13,200, right? Do I have the number right?
Yes.
Okay, great. And I think turning into a museum is a fantastic goal. It's the type of thing my kids absolutely love to do. There are a few depots that are open to the public as museums right now. I wholeheartedly agree. It's a tourist attraction. And I think it's the type of thing that fits our character as a county. This is something I'd like to support.
I know you've worked a long, long time on first stabilizing and now trying to resuscitate renovated. So it's something actually a working structure for the historical significance as well as our community. Our finance director has recommended that we use coal severance instead of ARPA, which I think would be more appropriate way to spend those funds.
I was going to ask that question. So thank you very much.
So the issue is because this grant that they received is a federal grant passed through the state. And so using ARPA would be a federal match for a federal
Right.
Grant. So you need a non-federal match.
So I think if we use our coal severance, we'll fulfill that requirement. So that'll be. I'll go ahead and make the motion to provide $13,200 in coal severance funds to the Landmarks Commission as part of an 8020 grant match.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, you name it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we're going to move on to item seven, Jennifer Brockman.
Hello again. This is a request. We had an application that was submitted to us and we took the fee of $100 in, and as we started to write the staff report, we realized that they weren't, the waiver wasn't required and it was the unnecessary application. So I never went to the planning commission, it never, we never really did anything and we would like to be able to refund the $100 fee to the applicant because it wasn't a necessary expenses. We don't have a way to write a check. We have to come to you all to get the check written by the finance office.
I'll move to recommend a full refund of $100 fee related to an application that was deemed unnecessary by staff. Second, any discussion? Only thing I'd like to say is I think we should probably write a policy for this. So you would have to come here and our county administrator could just sign off on it at some point.
That's a great idea.
And, and it just would, you know, if there was a mistake and they need to refund, that's, I don't know, you need to come for the commission to do that all the time. All right. Just tell, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to move to agenda item number eight. Laura Kuhn, is she online?
Well, we're half an hour early.
What about, what about Jeff? Is he online? Oh, okay.
So Jeff's on travel right now. So he has two hires. These two hires come with some experience and the way that we budget. So you'll see the fiscal note there that it's above the amount budgeted for these positions because we budget for the minimum. And he has a scale of, so these are slightly above the minimum. And there is a dispatcher retiring at the end of May, which will is currently receiving almost 60,000 and then that position will again be vacant at the 48,664 amount. So this is just slightly above that starting pay for people with some great experience and education.
This is within budget for the department? Is that correct?
It is within budget for the department.
I move to approve the appointment of the following individuals as public safety dispatcher, AKA trainee at the hourly rate noted for each. The training incentive signing bonus of $2,000. And the post-training salary increase upon completion of hiring. Miss Jessica Waggoner Norris at $24.0982 per hour for $50,124 salary. And Ms. Evelyn Dabbler at $23.7473 per hour for $49,394.32 salary.
Second.
Any discussion?
It's, it's just very exciting to see folks coming to work here that have experience. They'll have to be, you know, trained as to our system and how it works, but there's surely experience is invaluable, I think, in this job arena.
Absolutely. All right. Any other, any further discussion from there? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, most carries three zero. All right, we're going to take a short break. We'll contact Mike and maybe Laura, but they were running ahead schedule and then they're not here. When we get done break, we'll jump into Bessie. Are you going to do it now? Oh, come on up. You're ready to go. How many cups of coffee did you have this morning? All right. All right. Then after, after you, we'll take a break. How about that?
Well, then we'll take a break about two minutes.
Yes, ma'am.
No, this is regarding the health insurance benefits for the county employees, not the ESA employees, as theirs are renewed in October. We budgeted for 9% increase. Proposal came to us at 5.2. I gave you updated information this morning because the 5.2 is what went into the packet. Late Monday evening or afternoon, I received an email from Lori from Millennial, the Millennium Group, that they were able to get it down to 4% with no increase of dental, which is fantastic. So in your packet, I only have the contracts in front of me. We, we were, like I said, we were expecting 9%. We're getting it at 4% and nothing else is increasing except for the health insurance. We had talked during budget deliberations to absorb that cost with the current COLA merit type situation. So that increase is just, it's a little under $100,000 for the current enrollments that we have. So and we budgeted about 200,000 for that increase. So we're coming in under. So we're coming in under budget and that's it. And I'm asking the commission to absorb that and not pass that increase on to the employees.
Absolutely. Well, thank you. Thank you for that. And I would ask, you know, obviously we, we had planned a nine percent increase. So we could potentially have money for COLA.
Yeah.
Maybe.
That's, I would like that to be an agenda item. Once we get, we've got the numbers that we need to make that decision.
Yes, ma'am.
I agree with that idea. Thank you. Yep.
I'll, I'll make the motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-five benefit selection to include medical, dental vision and life insurance as presented for approval. And that the county commission absorbs the increase in premiums. So they are not passed on to the employees.
Second. Any discussion? Yeah, could you, was it four flat, four percent?
Four percent flat.
Thanks. All right, any further discussion?
And I didn't include, include the spreadsheet of what the current premiums are, what they were last year, what that increase means for the county to take on.
All right. Anything else? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most, most curious three zero.
So before Bessie leaves, I just want to say a huge thanks for these fiscal notes.
Yeah.
So as you can see, it really breaks down how much was budgeted, how much is being proposed, what budget account it should be coming from. And I think that this provides great information for you to quickly ascertain what's in front of you.
No, and I appreciate.
Kudos, kudos to Bessie.
Yes, and I wanted to echo your thoughts. That makes decisions much easier, being informed ahead of time before we even get here. Gives us time to think about it and look at the numbers and understand it completely. Great.
Plus you don't have to call out from the back.
Exactly. At the direction of our new county administrator. She's cracking the whip already.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. And then we'll take a, we'll take a short break and we'll see if Laura can come on in and then maybe Mike. And then we'll, we'll keep moving on.
And if.
All right, welcome back. We took a short break. We're going to move back to agenda item number eight, Laura Kuhn.
Good morning.
Morning.
Um, we were here, I was here with Jennifer a couple of weeks ago about the gym and the, the, not the gym and the AC, the AC in the gym. So, and I told you at the time, we came up with a temporary solution, which was the three, five horsepower or not horsepower, five ton
Yeah.
AC units. So Jennifer's board voted to move ahead with that. The only thing I'm asking for is to pay for the actual units. They are going to take care of all the other miscellaneous materials, the electrician. So I'm asking for the sixteen thousand, six hundred, forty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents to cover that material. We can then take those units when they're done with them, put them in storage and reuse them. We use those units in a lot of our county buildings, so they will not go to waste. We will use them. And then she will pick up the rest of the cost. And we did look into a temporary HVAC unit for the gym, a rental. And that was fifty-five thousand for the first month.
Yeah.
And then a hundred and fifteen thousand for every month after that. So four to five months, that would be the cost of the new unit that they're putting in on the rooftop that she's already got approved. So I'm just asking to pay for that portion of it. That way we can take those units when this is over with and we can put them to use in our other buildings.
And from what I'm understanding here on the budget notes, the funding is available in capital outlet.
And is that number exact? I guess what I'm asking for, or reason for that question is if there's any overruns that we would, would it be better to bump that up to cover extra, if there's something extra? Because, because we're trying to get the AC up and this parks or gym is very important because summer's approaching.
That's the exact number that I'm asking from you. Any other costs will be paid from, from parks and rec?
Okay, all right. I, I just want to make sure you have
Yeah, that's.
The number you're asking for, if, if you, if you, because it's so important, I don't want to have a delay. You have to say, hey, there's a thousand dollar overrun and now you have to come back before.
Yeah, parks will cover any additional.
Okay, all right.
Mr. President, move to approve the purchase of three five-ton heat pump units for the gymnasium at the Jefferson County Community Center at a cost of sixteen thousand, six hundred, forty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents. Pulled from capital outlet.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most, most curious three zero. Thank you.
Good job.
Hope we can get all that operational soon.
Sorry y'all had to wait another two weeks. It wasn't on the agenda last two weeks ago, but thanks for coming back and we'll keep that up and running soon. Yes, ma'am. I saw, no doubt. All right, we're going to move on to agenda item number eleven, Mike Sun.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Few items today. First item, we have our MOU with the National Park Service. This is standing MOU. They redo it every, I think about every five years. So we started this last year and it kind of got delayed. Nathan's already reviewed it, made a few edits and they accepted it. And then they had a superintendent change. So, so now we're, we're just finalizing that. So everything looks good on it. I've signed it. We just need your final approval and signature.
Okay. I'll move to approve the endorse the updated MOU with Harp Street National Park Service.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most passes three zero.
All right, the next topic is our pay table and pay table policy. This has been kind of an issue for at least a year.
Bessie, would you want to come up on this one and sit here in case we have any question for you too? We have room for you. Sorry, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
That's okay. So when we did the transition, we added an additional unit, which made four more positions. We were able to fill those with our employees who were currently in school and getting training to advance their careers. So that was good. We identified at the time that the pay, we had done an internal pay study on our own without using a consultant and that we had some issues with pay comparison to other agencies, especially Berkeley County, which is one of our main competitors. So through the budget process last year, an adjustment was made to the base pay for the paramedic. And that was the, the one thing we were really trying to, to take care of because we were having trouble recruiting paramedics. We adjusted the pay, starting pay for that position at the time. And we use this pay table to, as a matter of progression. So all our employees can see where their growth potential is, where they can be through promotion. There's thirteen promotional steps from basic EMT to advanced paramedic and then through lieutenant and captain. So it shows them where they can go with their education and experience and training. And then years of service are what goes across from left to right. Normally you, you, you will know in ten years what you should be making if you become a paramedic. So if I want to go to paramedic school and I've been here ten years, I can look at this chart and know exactly that's my potential. So it's, it's a great tool for our employees. It's pretty common through the fire and rescue services. You know, most places use a table like this. But here's the problem, when we, when we adjusted the base pay for paramedics, we did not let it reflect the entire section of the paramedic on the table. We plugged in the base pay and it made no adjustments to the rest of the calculations. So when you plug in paramedic one at year zero, it self calculates all the way across the percentages in years of service and then through your promotional steps. We did not make that change in the table at that time due to budgetary concerns. So what we have caused is two things, compression. Our current employees have basically lost several years of employment as how it looks. Because we brought in new employees at a higher pay rate. Our current employees did not get moved up the table accordingly. So basically wiped out five years of their experience here in their employment. And then my new employees, this causes a small, in one of the tables I provided for you, the red line version of the table, there's a yellow triangle there or gold. Those positions do not get a pay raise. So the new guys that I've enticed with a higher pay rate don't get a pay raise for three or four years in those thirteen positions. So it's really kind of broken my table the way it is intended and how it's supposed to work. So what we're, we needed to revise the entire policy and the table itself. So what I'm asking is to approve the revision, which puts the twenty-five dollars an hour base pay into year zero for paramedic, lets it self calculate according to the steps, the promotional steps at two and a half percent, five percent, as it's indicated here. And let it calculate across accordingly to adjust the pays where they should be at this time. And then we are going to change some of the wording and how it's done. Typically, the zero through twenty-five from left to right were years of service. So that under the direction when we were aboard and a component agency, we were exempt from COLAs and county merits. So the director Burner had built this table and we had a one per, one point nine percent increment yearly. And he added that into his budget and generally it got approved. So you knew that separate from the county, that through our system where you would be, you were going to get these raises. So since we are now part of the county system and we're going to be part of the merit system, we're going to change this to grade step increases. So we'll still get the COLAs like everyone else when they're applied. And these will be used for merit increases. So under the merit review, you'll know that you could get, depending on how much is budgeted, you could, everyone should get a base of one step a year for your merit. And you could get maybe up to three when we complete the merit process, depending on funding.
Yeah.
So going to modify that to reflect that change in this. And then also we have a program where currently we hire employees all at the base rate, no matter your years of experience. If you came here as a retiree from Fairfax County with twenty-five years, you still come in at the base rate. You would have to wait until after your six months of your orientation to request an adjustment to your pay. We call it a years of experience credit. You would apply, put in a written request and give us documentation of wherever you worked as a career nine-one person. And then we would adjust your pay accordingly. What we would like to do, I'm going to eliminate that section. I will give ninety days for current employees to, to request any other adjustments if they want to. And then after that point, well, after that point, that section will go away. And our next round of hires, we will start a pay range for starting salary. So in the and it will be step zero to step ten, because one step previously was equal to two years of experience. So if you had twenty years in your previous, previous job, you've got ten steps. So we'll either bring, we'll bring them in accordingly at their starting rate. So we've lost out on a few qualified individuals in the last six months that were interested, that we could not bring them in with their experience immediately. So I think that's going to also correct this issue. So just looking for permission, permission, I included the red line version, edited version, and then the clean version of the policy and the table. It will, the revisions will affect twenty-nine total paramedics. It will, the revisions will affect twenty-nine total paramedics, twenty-one full-time and eight part-time. And then I'll leave that up to this.
The money lady. That is going to, that in order to do this table the correct way and have the calculate the two point five out, the one point nine, it is going to affect. Current employees and that will be an additional one hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. But Mike and I reviewing the budget and what we put in the budget for him, the money is there. It's not going to, we're not going to have to increase his budget. Because we are allowing it extra money for part-time people the way we calculated. And EMS is a little different right now because we don't have that history with them into our Tyler system and the way they do their pays a little different like. You can, we do overtime and part-time people, we recorded it or track it a little differently than what they currently do. So. Another year or two, we'll have that experience with EMS as the department and that will work itself out. But the numbers that we put in the budget, it's not going to, we're not asking for more money to support this.
If our employees don't work twenty-four hour shifts, so you're dealing with a different animal. So you've got to make some adjustments.
And we do have money in the current budget. We do this effective immediately to go ahead and adjust all the salaries. So. And.
And we want to be very clear, this is not a correction per se because we're not, we're not entertaining back pay.
Right.
If you vote for this, we'll go into effect the beginning of the next pay period, the first day of the next pay period.
Well, it'd probably be during this pay period. We're in the middle of a pay period, so we can make it effective this pay period. But yes, it it something we've addressed a few times. I had it in this year's budget process, but we're getting ready, we're taking back up. The onboarding, you know, to try to finalize these last things and this needs to be corrected before we get into the Tyler system. So.
Well, and it seems like it would make it much more attractive to. Potential employees with experience.
Absolutely. Our surrounding counties, which some of which we can't compete with, but. You know, we have a lot of people here that have been here for five years plus.
Right.
And there are people looking.
Right.
It's very enticing to go some of these places offer big money and it's really a huge loss when you you lose someone with experience. And we can bring on new people, but then they've got to learn our system and get comfortable with how, you know, you're starting over.
Right.
So I'd rather retain the people we have and be able to attract qualified new people. So I think this will make a huge improvement then.
And I just wanted to add also, if you're starting out as a paramedic, it twenty-five dollars an hour without those other adjustments coming in, there's no initiative or incentive for them to go ahead and test for their next.
Right, yeah. They they don't get the pay increase under this current table. So yeah, why would they take the initiative to to move up the ladder? So.
I move to approve the revised ESA pay table. Sorry, in corresponding ESA policy AP eleven ninety-two.
Second, any discussion?
I have a few questions. Thanks. Normally my approach is look if it's in budget. Don't have a lot of questions. Of course, with this department, you know, it's it's a new department. We're trying to fully fund it. Over time, we're going to have some challenges doing so. So I just want to drill down a little bit further on the the hundred twenty-eight K. You said it's in the budget. How does this fit into a long-term plan to fully fund your department, sir, ma'am, whoever wants to answer that?
Well, I mean, there's a lot of avenues we need to look at to to improve the funding. You know, we've talked about the. The EMS fee structure. You know, we've just made minor changes to billing with the refusals to be able to collect for those.
For the transports.
Yeah, for transports. Beyond that, I'm not sure, you know.
But we are, we need to explore. We've talked about this during the budget season. We need to explore the ambulance fee. I mean, it's been forty dollars, I believe, for nine, ten years.
Since its inception.
Yeah, since inception. And it was, it's my understanding, it was recommended at that time that it should have been about one forty.
I think one twenty initially and then we came to eighty and then it's finalized as a forty something.
Right, you know. Because we do have a need to, we'll talk about it again, we need to get middleway funded and and the mountain and then potential growth into Carneyville with the new subdivision being approved. So. We need to look at. The ambulance fee. We haven't done the research yet. We, it's just a beginning process right now on that.
Is there a drawback associated with this? Proposed motion? Is there a drawback to? The long-term balancing the budget or fully funding services if we were to approve this?
I don't see one.
Not that. She's identified all the issues to me. So she's manages the money.
Okay.
Yeah, I get your concerns. I mean, there are a lot of challenges with this and trying to figure out, I really don't know that. Fire and rescue will ever self-fund itself. It's a very expensive endeavor and we're behind the eight ball on staffing. So we have a lot of needs and we're going to continue to play catch-up every year. It's going to, should expand yearly. So it's going to be a very expensive endeavor. I'm not quite sure, you know.
What what I would recommend is if you look at this table, you see that between each grade level, they increase by two point five percent. And then going across each step level, it increases by one point nine percent. And this table was very simple for people to understand how to move forward. So to go from a paramedic one to a paramedic two, they can go ahead and take that and what it would mean then for their family to move from one step to the other. But when we decided to piecemeal and just take one position and change just that one position. Now someone who's a paramedic one can take the extra class to become a paramedic two, to become a paramedic three, to become a paramedic four. And still receive not two cents more for that additional classwork. So when we look at pay scales and changing them, I think it's really important that we look at the entire table. And that's why I'm really appreciative of both the work Mike and Bessie have put in on this to show you. That making that one small change needs to be more inclusive than just one position because it it does have these ramifications and we need to look at it globally.
Well, speaking of looking at it globally, I know that we're considering hiring a new HR director and if we were to do that hypothetically. Would, this is a question for Eddie. Would that new director want to implement something similar? Across departments? And the reason I ask is because is there, do you see a problem procedurally with addressing this department first before it's? Perhaps hypothetically implemented globally?
I would love for something like this to be implemented across all of the departments and really look at EMS as an example of how. It can work across all departments. And so I don't, I don't think this this would prevent or hinder. An HR person in any way, in fact, should be used as an example.
Okay, that's helpful. You spoke to this director sign, but if you could comment a little bit further, you know, how do you think this will affect employee retention? Would, do you see employees moving across county borders regardless, even if this were implemented? Or do you think this would counteract that?
Well, you're always going to have people, I mean, they're. Our system, each system is very different in what it brings to the table. We're very. Similarly aligned to Berkeley in our size and scope and how we do things. We compete with the larger. Systems, Fairfax, Montgomery, Loudon, who is the richest county in the state, so they just keep pouring money. So the money is definitely a big factor for these guys. You know, they work the twenty-four hour shifts. They see the opportunities down there. But there's a lot of things that come along with that. When you go, there's more structure, higher volume, just different aspects of the job. You know, this is a more relaxed system here. We're more family oriented, I think, because we're small. I can tell you, I don't have a list of names. I do have quite a few people that are either in processes. Because they're concerned about the pay here and what was done during the pay table. That they are exploring other opportunities and several of them have. I did not announce that this was on the agenda because I didn't really want to get their hopes up and chant in case it did not pass. Because it is a very sore subject. I've heard about this from the moment that we made the adjustment to the base salary. It's caused a lot of controversy within the department. It's really upset a lot of the people that's been here. And I think it will go a long way with retention to keep these experienced people. I mean, we're always going to lose a few here and there. But most people come here because they like our system and but when you see bigger dollars. The next county over, you really think about leaving. And I think this would be a huge step forward in. Not only retaining, but attracting experienced people too.
Thank you. And just one more time, you know, if if another department want to implement something like this. Just to clarify, this is already within your budget, one hundred twenty-eight thousand. Could you speak to that? You can fund this, if this motion were to be approved, you could fund it with the existing budget. Is that correct?
The existing budget and EMS's personal budget.
All right, okay. All right, thank you.
I have not explored any of the other departments of lending this with that, what kind of cost impact that would be. I can tell you all the other departments and the county departments, we have funded their personnel based on current salaries. So.
Okay.
Yeah, I think our department is unique because, well, sheriff department similarly, we have so many different positions and ranks and ways to move up the ladder. Your other county departments aren't necessarily that same. But so it just gives a real clear picture of how you can progress over the years and what you can attain. And we have for each, we have a clear job description for each title. So they know exactly what they need to do to move up the ladder. Well, you know, I want to become a paramedic four and that's just what I've been here ten years and this is what I'll make and that's, that looks really good. So. I know these are the steps I need to do to get there. So I think it provides a very clear picture for our people to progress.
Thank you. That's, that's all my questions.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, most carries three zero. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Now, the next two, I have. An employee who came on recently with us back in January, who came on initially part-time and he's found that he really likes it here. And he wants to come on full-time with us the beginning of the fiscal year. So we have Colin Graham, he's a firefighter, paramedic one. He's currently part-time, he's going to transition to full-time. He will stay at his current pay rate of twenty-five dollars an hour. Until he completes his probationary period. His adjustment for that, I did get approved, hoping in the future that we would make corrections to the pay table. So had it not been corrected, he would have remained at twenty-five and gotten their raise after his six months. But this will be effective six thirty, twenty twenty-four.
Mr. President, I move to transfer Colin Graham, a firefighter, paramedic one, from part-time to full-time, continuing at the same rate of twenty-five dollars per hour. Until completion of his probationary period. This transfers to be effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most carries you'd answer.
All right. And the last one is a promotion. This employee, she recently got cleared to to drive fire trucks. So she's gone through all the process. She can drive the fire engines. She's stationed in an independent fire company and through that process, she's now eligible to promote to paramedic three. Since we've, you graciously corrected this pay table, she will now receive a raise to reflect her accomplishment. If we had not done that, she would not have gotten the raise and yeah, so this is one of the things because she's been with us a few years. So she fell right into the gray area there. So. We want to promote Kayla Napier from firefighter paramedic two to firefighter paramedic three. Her pay rate will increase to twenty-seven, twenty-seven per hour and that's effective four twenty-one of twenty-four, which is the beginning of this pay period.
Oh, go ahead, sir.
Mr. President, I move to approve the promotion of Kayla Napier from firefighter slash paramedic two to firefighter slash paramedic three. And receive a pay rate increase to twenty-seven dollars and twenty-seven cents per hour. This is to be effective April twenty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, most carries, you'd answer.
Congratulations.
All right, thank you. I can tell you my employees will be most appreciative of correcting this pay table. Thank you very much.
I'm hoping this will make a difference on retention and attraction.
Yes, absolutely. It's a huge move.
And just a little story from my brother-in-law Walter Tab that no longer lives in this area. He worked in Fairfax County, retired from there and he said. This was in the eighties, nineties. They were so busy, they didn't even get lunch. I mean, they just were at it all the time. So. That's hopefully not quite so busy here. An attraction for some people.
Absolutely.
And I believe the third week of May is EMT appreciation week.
EMS week, yes.
EMS week, EMS week. So it will see you back here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Perfect.
Or maybe a proclamation or something, maybe. Something, all right, hopefully. All right, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bessie.
Thank you for your hard work. Yes.
Excellent.
All right. Today is the. All right, Nathan, agenda item number thirteen, which items are any an open session or closed session?
Commissioner Stollper, I have matters related to both of my points A and B. And they are matters that would require legal advice and or discussion of a potential contract. So I would recommend that you go into executive session on those issues.
Okay, I'll move to go into executive session to to receive legal advice on my thirteen A and thirteen B presented by our counsel, Nate Cock. Second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're in executive session. We're in executive session.
Hi, welcome back. We're on exec session. I'm new to coming out of exec session.
Second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Post, most carries three zero. All right, we're going to hit, hit up the end of the meeting here with county ministry reports. I'll turn it over to Eddie.
All right, so first up, I was asked at the April fourth meeting to work with Charles Town and Ranson, city administrators, that's John Nissel and Todd Wilt, with regard to possible changes to 147. So I've drafted those, sent those through our legal counsel. Our legal counsel signed up on them and then now they are with John and Todd. And we should hear back from them shortly. The basic changes to 147 were with regard to being able to serve at the end of an, at the end of a term until an appointed replacement is qualified. And then also for the city, for the county seat, that county seat was only, someone was only eligible if they were a member of the former PSD sewer or extension of the former PSD sewer. And so that, the suggestion was to change it to anyone who was a CTUB customer that was not in the municipality, not a resident of Ranson or, or Charles Town. Then with regard to the 25 appropriations, they were due today and we submitted them last week. And so I've shared again the appropriations that were approved by you, which were 100,000 for radios and other technology for homeland security, 350 for an ambulance, 500 for the Ranson ESA building expansion, 500 for sinkhole remediation, paving the parking lot and taking down the smoot building, 100,000 to replace license plate readers that are going to be obsolete and 350 for a Bearcat armored vehicle. All of those were applied for and especially working with fleets and facilities, ESA, homeland security and the sheriff's office, they were amazing in helping get the required letters of support and working through the budget stuff for that. I do want to note that the sheriff's request came in slightly above that, that was approved because the, the quotes that came back were slightly, slightly larger. So the 100 was actually 118,000. Then with regard to grant funding, we had talked about trying to find other sources of funding besides just county taxpayers for funds that we should go after. We pay $54,000 annually to region nine for this service and haven't been using them recently. So I brought in region nine, all of their staff met with all of the directors so that we can start applying for those. I have attached the last listing of the current region nine projects and you'll see just two county projects that were from several years ago and they were just under like discovery stage. They weren't even in application stage. With regard to opioid funding, last month, the commission held a workshop on the opioid academic and asked me to come up with a plan of how we might use that 1.2. I've reached out to a number of stakeholders and my recommendation is that we continue to wait. The statewide executive director for the West Virginia First Foundation starts next week. And then region two will be putting together an assessment and my recommendation is that we're part of that assessment. And we use that assessment to guide our use of the 1.2 million dollars that we've received as part of the opioid settlement. Then with regard to the impact fee, I just wanted to let you know that that has been signed off by all parties and is underway right now. And the consultant has started his analysis and is meeting with impact fee entities this week to collect data.
Thanks. Hopefully we get some, a good report back that'll help us balance the books in the long term for emergency services. I know that prompted discussion and I look forward to hearing more.
All right, see, am I answering any further questions? Is there any other business that needs come before the commission today? Hearing none, if there are no objections, we adjourn. Thank you.